Good evening, everybody. The study session of April twenty six, two thousand and twenty-two is called to order. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Bowe?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Nesto?
Here.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Present.
Everyone is here, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Our first topic this evening is about having a youth representative on the council. City manager Knighton has information for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So tonight I have two examples of different cities in Washington State that have implemented a youth liaison to council. I provided both of those examples to you and wanted to go over them really quickly. The first one is from the city of Squim, and it is right at the top. It says Resolution Number R two thousand and six dash zero four. And this is the resolution, but one of the things I wanted to point out to you is in the third recital, the third, whereas it says, it's the process of facilitating important interaction between the community, youth, and the council can occur through the associated student bodies of the school district. So what that means to me is that it would be the Associated Student Bodies President. So it's not something that, you know, you have to go through the school superintendent or the principal. You would, but not in a way for nominations, those types of things. And that this position is, shall be advisory to the city council, and it shall be given the opportunity to offer advice on any issue before the council. So there's a couple of important distinctions there for council to consider when thinking about this type of program. The second one is a code section, and it's from the city of Quincy, Washington. And there was a couple of things in there for you to think about as part of this program. First, in the first section, section two point two zero point oh one oh, it says that that the student that's appointed to this position would serve as liaison between the council and the high school. So there is, there's a little bit to think about there, whether it is specifically for a high school student or should it be a representative or a voice of all of the young people in our community and not just the high school. Second, in the second section, zero two oh, under appointment, Quincy has a little bit different form of government than we do. They have a strong mayor form. So the way that that section is written is that the mayor would appoint, and the city council would confirm. And in our form of government, it'd be slightly different. I would appoint, and the council would confirm. So that would be the major distinction there. In both of these cases, both in Squim and Quincy, student representative would not be invited to executive sessions unless specifically invited by the council. And then there was a section that I thought was interesting in the Quincy code that if there was something that was directly, something properly before council that was, had a direct impact on either students or young people in the community, that the student representative would be encouraged to participate the same way that the members of the public do, rather than as part of the council. And the other thing I wanted to point out in the Quincy section oh four oh, the term of office, they have it for two years, and it starts at the beginning of the year. And I thought something that council may want to consider, assuming we move forward with this program at all, is that a student would begin their term right at the start of the school year. And then the term would end either, you know, once the school year ends, or if it's a multiple-year term, two-year term, once the school year ends in the second year. So those are the two pieces. There are examples of this type of program in other areas of the state. And wanted to provide those to you. And I know Councilmember McDowell has brought this up on a couple of occasions and wanted to hold this, this study session to discuss the benefits of something like this. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to see maybe it be by trimester. That way more students can participate throughout the school year. So three months, you know, then three months and three months, if the council likes that. And also, yeah, all young people, not just high school. Maybe a junior and senior of the high school represents all the people, all the schools. And I have another note here, and I think that they should apply for it through their school, and their principal should recommend to you who gets it, because a student president or might not want to do it. And I also think it should be two. I think one of these is one person, and the other one is two.
Yeah, there is a provision, I believe, in the Quincy version that you have a representative and then an alternate.
Yep. That's my thoughts. Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Gutiérrez.
Thank you. We have three high schools. So we get one from each and one per trimester, or should we have three members for those three trimesters? Just asking. I'd like more inclusive, but it also, that's going to triple the work. So but democracy is hard, and I think it's valuable. So.
We lost you. You muted. We didn't hear what you said the last.
You're muted.
How would we, how would we give fair representation among the three high schools?
Well, I think that they can all apply. All three high schools could apply to the principal of the high school. Wouldn't that be, where do you want to go with that?
Yeah, I think in this instance, then that we would want to include the entire district if the council wants to move forward on this and have the district forward, you know, two or three candidates to, to the city, and then we would make the appointment from there.
Thank you. Council, Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
Sorry, Councilmember McDowell was had her hand up before me. Go ahead.
That's all right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thanks. My only, hmm, so thank, good, good point from Councilmember Gutierrez on that. I would agree. We would need to fairly represent the school, the high schools within the school district. I think that could probably be done internally in the school district, but my bigger question was, have we actually had the conversation with the school district yet? That they're even interested in participating?
No, we have not. I wanted to make sure that the council wanted to move forward with that before I reached out to our partners.
Yeah, no, no, understood. Great. So I think in my mind, I like the associate student body representatives, whether they're the class president or whatever, they're part of that. So they have an interest in governing in some level. So I think that would be a good start. And the other, you know, so with that, then I think it would be good to find out if the school district is even interested. So then we could put kind of some sideboards around this and figure out, A, is this even something they're going to even want to do? They may not. I don't know. And my last little point is just, we probably need to make this well worth their time. And I'm thinking about school schedules and our schedules and, you know, and how we approach business in the city. I just want to make sure that, you know, it's, we're not in sort of a slow point in the cycle or something like that where there, there isn't really much to talk about, I guess. You know, there's always plenty of things to debate and discuss, but we have a business agenda, and we've got, you know, a calendar that goes out quite a ways. I just want to make sure that if we are going to do this, I think it's a good idea. I want to support it. I just want to make it worth everybody's time, and it be beneficial in the long run. Thank you.
Councilmember McDowell?
I think Deidre was before me. So Deidre, you go ahead.
Kathy, you were before Joe. So you go on ahead.
Okay. I'm really glad that we're having this conversation. I think it's very, very important for our high school, for, for our high school students to learn government. And I think that it's, we are, I considered our city government grassroots. We're right at the bottom. We, we, we talk about stuff, we decide on stuff, we bring it to the top. So I think that grassroots for our high school is great. I would like to put it out to all three high schools. We may only get one person. And we might get three, but then we can go from there. As far as, oh, gosh, I lost my train of thought here. Well, anyway, I would like to see it out of all three high schools.
Right. Councilmember Peterson?
I'm going to kind of take this from a different angle. So I love the idea about giving youth an opportunity to weigh in on some of these issues. I do think it's important that we recognize the fact that we only recently changed this format of government and adding an additional seat on the council as we're getting established. To me, it makes more sense to maybe look at doing a youth commission, which there are many more examples of throughout the state, which would allow maybe each of the high schools to have a representative, maybe even Olympic College, and allowing then those activities, whether it was topics that council was considering or things that the students wanted to bring forward to council, an opportunity to have them discuss amongst themselves and make suggestions, and then have that come up to council. So having it in more of a format of a commission to council, to me, makes a lot more sense. And I'm just looking at the examples on the MRSC. And I'm sure that Jeff has those, but I can share them. And there are several examples of that. Some are as small as seven, some, and these, again, these are just examples. It would have to be scaled to our population and the amount of interest that we have from the community. But it seems like these typically tend to weigh in on parks, libraries, human services, social issues. So if there's a way to give them something to kind of own, rather than having them in on every single bit of housekeeping that council is working on and code and development, to me, that makes a lot more sense.
Councilmember Sherman?
Just curious what our timeline is for starting this, because we are at the end of April. School ends in June. We're getting kind of close there. And if we're trying to start this in September, that doesn't give them a whole lot of time. So just kind of curious about that. And then part two of my questions here is, if we have a backup, because let's say you do decide to do the ASB president. Typically, people who are involved in things like that are in other clubs, sports, and activities, which often run past six P M. on a school night. So it's just if there would be maybe a backup for that person, and I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah. So as far as timing, I think that, as I mentioned, I wanted to make sure that the council was comfortable with this direction or with the youth commission before I reached out to our partners to find out what that might look like for them. Once I have that direction for council, the school superintendent and I have a really good relationship. I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be able to get a meeting with him and design this type of program relatively quickly. And then the idea kind of centered around when it would start, going back to the Quincy example. They start, you know, in January with their new term. What I would propose is start at the beginning of the next school year. So we would have a good, what, four months, I think, something like that, before the school year began in order to institute the program. But going back to Councilmember Peterson's point, there are other types of this, types of these activities, youth commissions in quite a bit, quite a few cities in Washington State that do offer opinions collectively to the city council on various issues, but they do typically own one or two areas where they may make recommendations to council. Parks and Rec programs is a big one, for example. But the, what we were looking at here was the youth representative of the council. I'd be happy to come back at another work session focused specifically on commissions, if that's what the city council would like to look at.
I kind of like the representative from the schools, if all three schools, that would be fine with me. Commissioner McDowell?
Would it be a possibility? Where is Quincy, Washington? Where is that?
It's not too far from Wenatchee, I would say.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then, and then the other one is what?
Squim.
Squim. I was thinking it'd be kind of cool if one or two of us went up and sat in on a council meeting and watched how they do their student on it.
I'd be happy to reach out to the city administrator and Quincy and the city manager in Squim and find out. You know, the Squin one was done in two thousand and six.
Yeah.
Find out if it's still active. You know, I'd be happy to do that and bring that information back to council.
That'd be great.
And since we're all on Zoom now, we could participate or watch the council meetings from, from here.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
Unless it's a sunny day and we want to go up to the coast.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right. Any direction for what direction we want to go?
Well, have, have Jeff start looking into get, get together with the superintendent. I think that's a good start.
Yeah, I can be happy to talk to the superintendent and find out which one, from the school district's perspective, would work best, if any of them would.
Right.
And bring, and bring that back to council. And then we can touch base with other communities that are similarly situated and look at how their program has worked and to make sure it's still an active program.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor, one more. Sorry. You know, I, I just do want to make this suggestion now thinking about it. I, either, either way, for me, it seems like we're accomplishing the goal of engaging youth in government and civic process in the community, which is great. I guess in my mind, I think we should be completely unanimous on this one. So if there's anybody opposed, completely opposed with those two suggestions, I would say that's kind of a stop at this point. But what I'm hearing is we're all, we're for this, just one form or another, correct? Am I interpreting that correctly? I think so. Okay. So I'll take that as we're all good. So sorry, go ahead.
I love the idea of getting youth involved. In fact, in my college, I was the representative to the Board of Trustees for the college. But I think in that case, like, it makes sense that there's a student rep on the school board, right? It directly affects their daily lives. We don't have separate demographic representatives for the elderly or the unhoused or these other things. And I've heard that argument. To me, that's a separate issue. I think it's important that we do provide opportunities for students to have civic engagement and learn about participating in local government, as Councilmember Schmidt said. Just to me, I think from a flexibility standpoint, and also from like making it worth their time, it makes more sense to me that we have a youth council that considers things, and we can talk about what that is, and then brings it to the council rather than putting them, you know, an eighth position on the current council. To me, that makes more sense. And so I have some concern over going for the full-fledged student representative on the council, but I think it's really important that we provide opportunities for our young people to have their voices heard more actively and provide them opportunities to, you know, engage in this way.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowe? Did we lose him? He had his hand up. Councilmember Bowe, are you out there?
I think we won't let me lower my hands, and I know.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm impartial.
All right.
I'm so impartial to this. I, I could float either way very easily.
Thank you, Councilmember. On Deputy Mayor's comment about unanimous, unfortunately, or form of government, it only takes four of us to really to make a decision. So I, I think it's important. I think having them sit with us, engage with us, is going to engage their parents and their aunts and their uncles. And we're going to get more participation in our government, and I like to move forward with this.
So next steps, then, I will make sure to reach out to our partners at the school district, find out maybe if they have a preference, and see how we can engage with the school district on this topic. And then find out how effective, long-term, the program has been in some of the other communities around the state, both types of programs. And then put together a draft for council to consider in the future business meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutiérrez?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're just as inclusive as possible and invite as many high schools and make sure that everyone's included. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Are we moving on? All right. Our next item is regarding Movies in the Park, Community Development Director Mark Ziegler has, will begin the discussion for us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm actually going to turn this over to Recreation Coordinator Jordan Crumples, as Jordan has put together all the information regarding this topic. And, and I think it's, it's got everything there for you. So I'm just going to turn it over to her at this point, and she can answer any questions, give you a brief rundown of what's, what our options are, and gather any more information if you need it moving forward. So Jordan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. Welcome, Jordan. We haven't seen you for a while.
Thanks. Glad to be here. Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I bring you Movies in the Park. So ideally, we would be looking at piggybacking off of Music in the Park, which runs July seventh through August eleventh. So therefore, we would do it that Friday, July eighth through August twelfth. Ideally, we'd be looking at having three staff, one park staff and two city staff represent during that time, park to take care of restrooms and whatnot, and then two staff taking care of takedown and tech and just supervision in general, equipment. So you will see in your packet that there's a couple of different packages, package options. From a Parks and Rec point of view, we would recommend the Platinum Package based off of, you know, crowd size and screen size, basically. And I can go into further detail later on if you want more info on that. As for movies and licensing, so each license is for one movie for one night. So realistically, if you're looking at a crowd of two hundred to five hundred people, the license for that movie would range from about six hundred to seven hundred bucks per movie. Keep in mind, Disney movies, which I have also listed a couple of different ones, potentials, Disney movies are, have a very strict schedule for when they are able to play. And same with, depending on what movie in, because we're so close to our movie theater, we need to make sure we're not overlapping with what they are potentially playing, because we're such in close proximity, because we would be doing this at Neyland Park. And then you have about, for delivery, you know, by the time you do purchase, company said about one to four weeks for turnaround time once purchased, so it'd be pretty quick. And then, yeah, I have a list of about twenty different movies. I have camp counselor background, so I did choose the twenty movies off of the website, which is Swink Movies. So I kind of went off of, based off of what I would show to my campers, or, you know, just family-oriented movies. So we'll take any questions if you have any.
Okay. Can anyone have any questions for Jordan? Councilmember Peterson?
Very chatty tonight. So I was wondering if there might be an opportunity to either work with the local business community to sponsor each week of the program, or perhaps even looking, asking if the rotary that puts on music in the park would be willing to extend their foundation funding to even cover a portion of this cost? Because this is obviously a new program. It was not something that you all had budgeted, and we've kind of said, tell us how we can do this. So I really appreciate you doing all the legwork on this, Jordan, but I'm kind of wondering, you know, what feasibly we can do, are allowable to do, and then how we might help if that is something that Parks and Rec thinks is worthwhile in going after.
Right. So I, yeah, I can look into more information in regards to other groups and partnering out with them and potential funding. Because I don't know for sure what the budget background is for something like this, with, if you're wanting to do it this year, or if it's something you want to look into doing next year. I don't know what your timeline is exactly, but it's something I can get more information off for you.
I'll jump in real quick. The total amount that we had for the, for those Fridays would be about eleven thousand dollars. And it certainly was not budgeted within the Parks and Recreation budget for, for two thousand and twenty-two. So I know there's consideration, whether it's LTAC or sponsorships or other partners that we could reach out to, to help us out throughout this project. It's, what we'd have to consider is if we committed to this, bought the equipment, and we didn't have those partners step up, obviously, we've got that commitment, like I said, financially, that we'd have to account for.
Okay, we got hands everywhere. I think Councilmember McDowell is next.
Yeah, I think it's an awesome idea. I'm just, the amount of money bowls me over. We have two, we also have two theaters, the drive-in and the one downtown, that we would. If we can, if we can make this work financially great, I, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
All right. Deputy Mayor, I think you were next.
Did we determine if there was a grant mechanism for this? I thought we were looking into LTAC as a potential grant that we could apply for. Did we determine that was a go or a no-go? Do we know?
So we did look into potential LTAC funding. One of the things that we have to make sure of when you use LTAC funding or request, request the funding is that it's drawing in people from out of town. And Movies in the Park from other communities that I've seen are typically for members of the community, and we don't necessarily advertise in, you know, Olympia or, you know, other far-flung areas for people to come out of town. So it'd be very difficult to tie the LTAC funding to this program.
Yes. Councilmember Sherman?
So with anything that we do with the city, there should be a goal. Why are we doing this? I'd love to hear our explanation. Obviously, it's a feel-good thing. We like that. But when money is involved, we need to have a goal, a measurable goal. Why are we doing this?
Oh, why, why do we have parks and baseball and soccer and, you know, and T-ball? Because we're trying to engage our community in our city. I would, I would say that. Now, my, I think it's great. I saw it in Lacey. I, I think it's awesome that the city provides this service and not an outside service. I think it would be great if we bought the equipment, and we did ask a business to sponsor a night, but I think it should be a city-run program, and we could have, this movie was brought to you by, I'm not going to say it, my, my name, Safeway. And this movie was brought to you by this people. But I really think it not be a rotary, a chamber. This is a city, city program that we're providing for our community, and I don't have a problem with sponsors for the movie, so that, so that one movie could be sponsored by somebody. I think that would be, that's a great, that was a great idea, whoever said that, Deidre or Councilmember Peterson, I think she said that. But I think it should be a city-run program. We're providing it for our community. And I saw a hand up, and it disappeared. Did you have a question?
I think it was me. Mine was still up. I put it down.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or questions?
I guess more of a comment. I, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan, not, not for that, not for that cost.
Congress question. Are we, are we moving forward with this, council?
Can I make one other suggestion? Another alternative, I mean, I love the idea of this being in the parks, but at, I mean, we're talking almost eighteen fifty a week is what we're talking about to put this on. Maybe an alternative would be to talk to Dorothea at Shelton Cinemas and see if they would be willing. They, they do Movie Mondays in the summer to try to have an activity for kids. Like, maybe the city could sponsor something like that, that's inside, that's already established, that supports a local business, gives kids and families something to do. There might be a way to work that out, that we're not investing this amount of money that's not budgeted. I mean, it's significant. I love, you know, if money were no object, I'd say, go for it, right this moment. But maybe that would be an alternative that we could consider.
I, I did talk to the manager of the theater. I wanted to make sure we weren't stepping on her toes, and, and she thought it was a great idea, and I, I did talk to the manager of the theater. Um, I wanted to make sure we weren't, uh, stepping on her toes and, and she thought it was a great idea and. I don't wanna get into it now, but she was gonna talk to the owner and see if maybe we could use their license, but I didn't really wanna get into that tonight, um. As a possibility, I'm not sure it is. But she thought it was a great idea and I said, hey, come down and sell popcorn. She said, hey, that sounds good, too. So, uh, Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I guess, you know, my, my comments on this are. I think our parks at some time, at, at points are underutilized, um, and we have a great asset in the community. Um, and we've done, you know, our park staff do a great job of, of managing our parks and I think this is an opportunity to. To continue to showcase to the community and to the business community. I would love to see a corral of, uh, food trucks and. And other things like that. I love, uh, I love the idea of Music in the Park. I love the idea of. Movies in the Park. I love the idea of using our public spaces for the good of the community. Um, instead of, uh, you know, at all the time, at dusk, the gates close and it sits there. Um, I'd like to see it utilized, I, you know, at this end of the, end of it all, I mean, who pays for it and who manages it and who runs it? Um, I would like it to be a city, uh, either sponsored or, you know, city-managed thing, but, um, I'm fine with another entity. Uh, you know, working through that, um, and, uh. And, you know, helping us with this. I think it's a great opportunity for partnership and I think. Again, it gets people out of the house and into our community, um, outside in our community, which, uh, do the research on walking around town and. And, uh, what that, what that equates to in terms of, uh, you know, just buzz and people see people out, they wanna come out. I mean. To me, it's a, it's a win and even if it is a ten thousand dollar investment, I would be willing to bet that. Certain, certain business organizations would profit off of the opportunity, so I would like to help them prosper in any possible way. Thanks.
Councilmember Gooder Terrace.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, my, put in my two cents for a second is, uh, yeah, I, I do agree that outdoor activities, especially, everyone's. Kinda COVID crazy, you know, you wanna get outside. Um, and I think this is a good way to, uh, release some of that energy and get people thinking about c- community again, instead of, uh, hiding. So, um, I think it's important and I think if we can't do it this year, we may damn well put money in twenty twenty-three to do it. Um, but I think we should do whatever we can to, um, get people out of their homes and start, uh, interacting with each other again.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bow.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking though, it's, it's a pretty late night in the park too, though, because I mean, it doesn't get dark until. What, what month are we looking to do it? So, I mean, people are gonna be out in the park till ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night?
Uh, about ten, I think they, they start showing those at eight o'clock in Lacey. Mark, you said the equipment was able to, uh, handle that?
Yeah, we, we believe we could start before daylight, especially if you're talking Neyland Park, when. The sun's kinda orientated more to, towards the west, you have a tree line, um, that, uh, that blocks some of that sunlight and. Obviously, with, with professional equipment, we're not pulling something out of an office here. Um, that can, it's not theater quality, but certainly something that can, that's utilized for this purpose.
All right, Councilmember Sherman.
I think we should look at, um, other options too, so I understand that you're saying weekly, but with that cost. Would it work if we did it twice a month, or maybe we just once a month to cut some of those costs, but we still have. That, uh, feeling of unity with the community, of something to look forward to. That's a possibility, maybe?
Councilmember Peterson.
I just wanna say, I don't know whose idea it was to kind of co-brand this with Music in the Park, but I think that's brilliant. I think. If we're gonna do that, um, it gives an opportunity to cross-promote for both organizations and I think the repetitive nature of it, it will get people in the habit of, like, there's something fun happening. Thursdays and Fridays all summer long, so if that's something that we decide, yes, it's worth the investment, I, I don't know who gets the credit, but kudos on pairing those together.
All right, Council, Deputy Mayor Smith.
Hey, so I just wanna re- remind or remember too, I just, just popped in my head, um, when, uh, Councilmember Peterson talked about Music in the Park. Uh, we all went to, well, some of us went to the, uh, AWC Conference in Yakima several years ago. And one of the things the city of Yakima did. And I know, uh, you know, Councilmember Peterson and I, you know, went out and, and it was a later evening event, but downtown summer nights in Yakima. They basically shut down the streets downtown and it's a tremendous event. All the tents have. City of Yakima on top, but it's, you know, vendors, nonprofits, private entities inside selling their products. Um, you know, the entertainment, the opportunity, and again, it got a lot of people out of the, out of the. Out of their houses into the community, into the core downtown, and guys, I'm gonna be blunt, um, our downtown core needs all the help it can get, can get and, you know, to. To not pursue any opportunity that, you know, is obviously. Financially makes sense. Okay, I'm not gonna, we shouldn't go into debt over anything or risk anything on that front, but. Again, I, we, we need to put the effort into the downtown core and, and I think this is just one thing of many other opportunities, but. Um, let's, let's do what we can to get people outside. And again, I'm, I'm open to partnering. I think that's a good idea. I'd love to see that cost. Be spread amongst other options, but, or other, uh, entities, but, hey, you know what, uh, again, um. This is part of, uh, the city's stake in economic development and sustainability of our downtown, so I think this is a good move. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Miguel.
Good opportunity for, um. Uh, people to have their food trucks and have the nonprofit tents down there selling hot dogs and potato chips and popcorn or whatever. Um, I. I like the idea. Thanks, Eric, for bringing that up. Appreciate it. It's just the cost makes me a little nervous right now.
Oh, yeah.
What's, you know, um, that's, that's what we're gonna have to, the idea is great, but how are we gonna pay for it? We don't want to, you know, take from one entity to pay for another, so let's, we can work it out, figure that one out, but. That it's, that's a great, great idea.
Well, I think we spend more on nuts and bolts probably than we would on this. I mean, um. I don't think that ten, this is ten thousand dollars is a total price, Mark, for the, for the season. With the equipment.
Yeah, we.
Again.
We, we ballparked at about eleven thousand dollars. Obviously, you have the initial investment of the equipment, which at the Platinum range is thirty-six ninety-nine, three thousand six hundred ninety-nine. So you have that investment in that equipment that's gonna be there year after year, so your operating costs are your staff. Time and the, the movie rental, so the licensing and the movie staff time, again, um. You know, maybe after the first week, we can get by with one person and a park, you know, maintenance person. We, we have a maintenance person on staff in the evenings. As it is, they probably have to stick around a little later, is our thought, so we'd probably have a couple hours. Uh, for that person, our seasonal worker that closes up parks in the summertime, um, because they, they typically close by eight thirty. Nine, uh, we extend it for Music in the Park and we thought we'd extend it for events like this. And then just have a couple people that, if you've seen those screens, they're on a blower, it takes a couple people to blow them up. We certainly could supplement that with volunteers and reduce some staff. Hours as well, potentially, um, but those are, you know, those are the operating costs outside of the, uh. Outside of the initial equipment cost, which is the screen, the projector and speaker system.
All right, Councilmember Sherman. Or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gooder Terrace, is your hand still up from before? Oh, go ahead then. I'm sorry.
Yes, my question is, uh, what happens if it rains? Do we, uh, continue? Is there? A rain check or?
Um, my thought is, and Jordan can weigh in on this, you, you, we probably, depending on the amount of rain. Um, the equipment we can protect with event, with a tent and, and, um, covered area at the, uh, at the shelter itself. So if it's, if it's drizzling, we can, we can, we're hardy people here in Shelton, Washington, we can battle through it. If it's a downpour, we, we can certainly reschedule. We have that license, um, that, that allows us to, to play that movie, um, for a one-time event, so, um, we just. We just reschedule it and probably move on from there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sherman.
We were talking about involving youth in different organizations. Maybe we can involve them in help with the cleanup and things too. Then they can feel like they're part of the community. I know that ROTC has come to me and asked for different opportunities where they could volunteer, maybe something like that. Um, there's different groups and organizations in the schools and the community that want to be involved and this might be a great way to get them involved and they could help.
Sounds, sounds good. So, sounds like, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember McDowell.
Yeah, one more thing. Talking about the community, the kids helping with it is, at the school, there is a organi- there's a club, um, that they do. Stuff, like, when I used to work at the Civic Center, they used to come in and help clean up after big events. So I don't know what they call that, that, uh, club that they have, but, um, we, I mean, we can call on them, they get credit. Um, for that, for their classes, so that's another option there.
Perfect. Are, so it sounds like we're moving forward. Uh, City Manager?
Yeah, we'll take a look at, uh, at all those options, uh, see when we can get the equipment here, uh, and see if we can start that. Uh, in July, uh, and that purchase, uh, would be part of the supplemental budget that you're going to take a look at, uh, about the same timeframe. So, uh, the, we can, uh, move forward. We've got a few more details to work out, uh, with the food trucks. Um, and there was a, a great suggestion, uh, when we were just kinda kicking this around to, uh. As far as parking is concerned, because we don't wanna impact the businesses, particularly the ones that's right across the street. With, uh, if we get two to five hundred people, that would be, uh, pretty amazing. But, uh, looking at parking options, uh, in potential shuttles, uh, to the site, so people can enjoy the evening in the park. And having those, uh, that, that, uh, activity that we would all like to see, uh, at the park during the, uh, the evening, the summer evenings. Uh, I think would be a solid thing for, uh, for downtown and for our community.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Is there any items for discussion? I know that City Manager Knight wanted to talk about for, for meeting schedules coming up.
Yeah. Uh, so I did wanna mention, uh, in the highlight for the community, uh, that we will return to in-person meetings on May seventeenth. Uh, that's not your next meeting coming up, but, uh, it will be, uh, May seventeenth for your second meeting. And it'll have a Zoom component as well, uh, so that the remote participation is enabled. Um, we've got, uh, our new video equipment downstairs and everything is ready to go along with our, uh, partner that, um. That broadcasts that, uh, those meetings to the community. Make sure all of that stuff works before we get back in person. Uh, so that we, uh, we encourage participation in whether you're in person or remote. But, uh, looking forward to that, uh, that in-person meeting from May seventeenth and into the foreseeable future. Fingers crossed.
What's the plan for seating again?
So, uh, seating will be the traditional format that, uh, we had, uh, pre, uh, COVID. So, uh, you'll all be, uh, seated the way you were. We won't be wiping down the podium with, uh, Clorox wipes every time the, the different speaker comes up. All those good things, but, uh, uh, one of the provisions of reopening, which has caused a little bit of a delay that we're, that we're working through. Is we have to have the in-person meeting and people able to participate in person, similar to the way we did it pre-COVID. You also have to have a Zoom component like we're doing now, so it's a little bit of a hybrid. Uh, and, uh, our city clerk, uh, Donna Nalt, is gonna be much busier than she was before. Uh, so making sure we get the help she needs so that we can encourage participation.
Sounds great. Looking forward to it.
Heck, absolutely. Are there any other items for discussion? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-three PM.